Go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is six o'clock. If you would, please stand. At this time Pastor Bob Thayer with Odessa Bible Church will lead us in the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a great job. Father, I thank you so much for the blessings of our country. Father, we come to you today with heavy hearts remembering the cost of the men and women who sacrificed so much on that day. So, Father, we thank you for the men. We will circle our room this evening, Father, dedicating their lives to the protection of our families, of our community, our churches, City Hall. Father, we thank you for them. I pray that you continue to strengthen their families. Father, I pray that your blessing be upon our meeting this evening as we discuss critical things in the life of our city. I pray that you give our council wisdom and understanding of the things ahead so that, Father, we might continue to prosper, given our freedom, a chance to grow, and, Father, more come to experience the joy of living in Odessa. In Jesus' name, but not prayer.
Amen. This time Councilmember Gardner will lead us in both pledges.
You want me with the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. This week marks a very tragic week in our history. 9/11. You know, where were you when you saw the planes hit the building? We have some first responders that have really gone above and beyond. These first responders have actually participated in a stair climb. Stair climb is 110 floors. We had some of our firefighters and one OPD officer go to the Dallas stair climb. They climbed 55 flights, got an elevator, rode down, and came back up to do the 110. We also had three OFR members that went to the Midland stair climb. Be honest with you, I got a little emotional remembering those days. You see in Dallas, they had a steel girder that came off one of the Twin Towers. And then you start to watch these heroes go in in their bunker gear. They are fully bunkered, air pack and all. Some were paramedics that went in. There were also officers that they allowed to climb. You see them going into that building and you realize that's exactly what happened on September 11th. Heroes went in and never came out. And unfortunately, they were found much later. But it was my honor to be able to go down there just to represent Odessa and be there to watch these heroes make that climb. It's not something they had to do. It's not anything someone told them to do. They did it of their own fruition and I could not have been more proud to see our -- that's the radio, it's all right. See our officer and our firemen head up those buildings. So at this time, I want to recognize those that climbed in Dallas. Terry Brumbelow, Jason Cotton, Joe Espinoza, Trish Gill, Hector Martin, and Marshall Williams. If you would, please come forward. Then our three officers or our three firemen that went to Midland, Josh Heron, Chase Rogers, and Corey Street. If you would, please come forward. And at this time, I'm going to give the microphone to Jason Cotton.
Well, Mayor Turner, Council, thank you.
Thank you.
It was a privilege for us to have you and an honor for us to have you travel to Dallas, make that trip, support us while we do that. That event in Dallas has been going on since 2011. This was the eighth year there are, and a lot of people don't realize this or know this, most of the general public, firemen all know it, but firemen, policemen, and EMS. 343 firemen, FDNY firemen, were lost on 9/11. 70 police officers and nine EMS personnel. 2,977 innocent people also lost their lives that day. The stair climb started in Denver, Colorado, back in 2003 with just a few people and spread like wildfire. And now there are memorial stair climbs honoring those people, honoring the 343, 70 law enforcement officers and nine EMS personnel throughout the country as well as other countries. For example, New Zealand actually just had theirs today. And so it's pretty impressive. It's impressive to see anybody ever gets a chance to go to one of those, you won't be disappointed. And to the guys that did the Midland one, Midland, I'm super proud of the Midland firemen and the guys that put that on. This is their second year. It's awesome. The whole event's awesome, but the key is that we never forget. We never forget those people that we lost. So also in appreciation, we want to give this to you. This is basically what we receive as registering for that event. It's a goodie bag with a T-shirt and a challenge coin of the Dallas stair climb in it. And once again, from all of us, thank you.
Okay, now we will move to the consent agenda and I do believe we need to table one item.
I make a motion, remove item G from the agenda, consent agenda.
Motion in a second to remove G and table that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G is removed and tabled. Now we need a motion to pass the final parts of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Next, we move to other council actions. Consider approval of the inter-local agreement with the Ector County Elections Administration for election services for the city of Odessa voters in Ector County. Ms. Grimaldi.
Mayor and Council, this item is to consider updating the Ector County Elections Administrator Agreement for Election Services. The voting machine fees went up from 200 to 25 per machine. The election cost will be shared by the county, ECSD, and the city.
Okay. Any questions? Not all entertain a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grimaldi. Next, we will move to a public hearing. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by P-Bar Parks Bill. Mr. Brenly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council approved this request on first reading back on August 28th of this Property involved in the request is located in the vicinity of the proposed Yukon Road and Aaron Parker Road. The sites are designated future development and future development drill reservation. They are currently vacant. The applicants in the case are P-Bar, Parks Bill, and 2012 Cross B LLC. They are the owners of the property. And the purpose of this original zoning and rezoning request, a special dwelling district, would facilitate single-family residential development and related uses on the property. And the staff has received documentation related to the release of the drill reservation. This area is located in the northeast part of the city of Odessa. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in the city. The original zoning requested for this site and the proposed developments, anticipated design, is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and neighborhoods. And it's also intended for the land use and the contents of the land use taken into consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brenly?
Thank you, Mr. Brenly.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone, please come forward? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of light investment and others. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city sent out 35 notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned and we did not receive a response, positive or negative, related to the request. The properties involved in the request are located southeast of the intersection of East Murphy Street and South Meadow. The sites are currently designated future development and they are occupied by industrial development and related uses. Surrounding properties are also consistent with industrial development and related uses. These properties are, they used to be the former Odessa Industrial Development Park. It was an industrial district that was expired. When it expired, the city annexed it in. And this is just annexing that property. And all the owners and applicants involved were participants in that industrial district and there aren't any outside property owners involved in this request. The applicants are light investments and others. And the request is for original zoning of light industrial and this would allow the property owners to expand their operations and add to existing facilities on their properties. The proposed original zoning of light industrial is not contrary to the established land uses in the area. It would not be contrary to the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan. And this request is not out of scale with the needs of this area and the city. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request and planning staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions related to this request.
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've been through that area and there's, it's very dark at night. You guys, if we're going to, I guess, build up this area, are we, do we have any plans on putting street lighting, efficient street lighting in that area?
I can contact Encore. That's who would do the street lighting, but I can get with Encore rep and see what we can do to add street lighting to that. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Also, how much are we looking at tax roll by annexing them in?
Oh, that I do not know.
Michael, how much are we looking at?
Mr. Hamilton, we'd have to do an analysis to figure out how much is generated now. If they're an industrial district.
So you didn't do an analysis before you actually brought this?
No, sir, we did not. No, no. They pay a fee currently in lieu of tax now. So we'll just take that number, but I do not know what that number is.
So take upon a burden that you don't know exactly where it's going to go? I don't understand that. Please help me understand that.
It was an industrial district before, so they paid a load up.
I'm speaking to our city manager if you don't mind.
Yes, but I can speak too because I'm leading a meeting.
Well, I'm a council member and I have the, I have the floor. So I'm asking.
I have the floor.
I have the floor. Your council, a council member is talking and I'm asking him a direct question.
Yes, but I'll lead the meeting.
Okay, I understand that.
So I just didn't.
Anyway.
They pay a fee currently in lieu of a tax. I don't know what that figure is, but we'll get that for you first thing in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will open a second public hearing on the proposed tax rate and schedule a final vote on tax rate. Ms. Muntzey.
Good evening, Council.
Evening.
The property tax code, section 26.06, requires two public hearings. If a tax rate is proposed that exceeds the effective tax rate, based on the proposed tax rate of 47.6601 cents, the total tax revenues for property on the tax roll will increase approximately 9.62% over the preceding year. We had the first public hearing on the proposed tax rate at our last meeting on August 28th at the regularly scheduled council meeting. The proposed tax rate provides the continued 20% general residency homestead exemption, the senior exemption of 15,000, the 5,000 to 12,000 disabled veteran exemption, the 5,000 exemption for disabled persons, and other state mandated exemptions, all of which have been included in the calculation of total taxable values for the 2019 tax year. All exemptions for the fiscal year 2019 total $1.93 billion. The following tax rates are in effect. Our last year's adopted tax rate was 49.3248 cents. We have taken a decrease of 1.664 cents to get to our current proposed rate of 47.6601. This is above the effective tax rate of 47.0791, but it is below the rollback rate. Total taxable value for the 1819 fiscal year is 8 billion, 242,476,048, and this is about a 10.99% increase over last year's value. Once we close the public hearing, we will need to vote on the resolution to set the final vote for the tax rate.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Muntzey.
I have a question.
Any questions for Ms. Muntzey?
I don't have one other than we're going to number two. Can we do on both, vote for both or separate?
We have to do them separately.
Separate votes, please.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
It's all that property tax code stuff.
You've done a lot of work on this idea. I really appreciate everything you've done. I just wanted to see if we could move on it pretty fast, but that's fine.
Okay. Any other questions? We do have one citizen who would like to speak. Larry Robinson, if you would, please come forward.
Mayor, Council. My name's Larry Robinson. I live at 809 Larchmont Place. I'm standing here today against not giving taxpayers a bigger break on the tax rate. The element of surprise from the increase in property values and revenues from sales tax seems to cut the city off guard. There seems to be a burden on how to spend the money without giving it back to the taxpayers. I think even though there is a little bit of a reduced rate, the overall tax burden has increased. The cities enjoyed about 9% increase from valuation in properties and then extreme benefits from sales tax revenue that has been up from what I read 20, 30, 40%. So I'll just ask that the council look a little bit deeper into the rate structure on that and see if they couldn't give it a little bit back to the residents that pay it. I may be a little bit late in the game coming in here, but with potential of more councilmen coming on board, that maybe they could take this and use it in the running campaign or maybe have future use for it. Odessa has a rolling economy and a rolling tax base. It's easy to tax residents that have been here for a long time, stay in one house 10, 20, 30 years, are always there. The tax praiser drones, Google, they're always there. But Odessa is typically a rolling economy. All the oil field, all the infrastructure damage that's done inside usually comes from the outside and a lot of the money dissipates to outside cities and different areas of the country and is not applied back here. So we've got to find some way to spread that tax burden more evenly and instead of targeting the same people every year, hit a little bit harder, I think, on personal property tax revenue, trying to identify what's always a moving target. I know it's hard to do, but I think that's where we need to look instead of always going back to the same taxpayer. But the wearers inside, as I say, always come in Odessa from the outside. And we need to save our tax increases, whether it's rate increase or revenue for the times, whenever maybe it goes slack a little bit around here. And I know having, you know, an extra 15, 17, 20 million dollars come in, we want to put it in Ector Theater 5.8, you know, the occupancy tax, maybe another million and a half, push towards that. Some of this money needs to be pushed back towards population. I met with a man today that was retiring 800 a month. He was then trying to buy a trailer to put implements to mow yards on to be able to afford to live here. 800 a month income. And everybody's faced with higher costs here, so anything could do to abate the burden on the house payer that are the easiest target. People don't move to have been here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward, they may come forward and speak.
I actually would like to say I agree with this citizen and I appreciate you standing up saying that. I've been saying that all along, but it doesn't seem like people are on that same page. So thank you for that comment.
Ms. Muntzey, may I ask one big question? Our total taxable value is 8 billion, is that correct?
Yes.
And our total deductions were nearly 2 billion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Nearly 25% of the assessed taxable value is exempt. I think that's, I think we're doing a very good job with the money.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
You might explain exactly what those exemptions are because I, maybe people know, maybe they've forgotten. So. Well, we, we have a homestead exemption that is available to anybody that owns their home and they go down to the appraisal district and they sign up for that. We also have an over 65 exemption for our senior citizens. We have exemptions for disabled veterans and disabled persons. And then there are some, a few state mandated exemptions that are in there too. And we've looked in the past and the city of Odessa recognizes a lot more exemptions than some of our other cities do in the, in the area.
Well, I think what's not being factored in is, as the gentleman pointed out, we have a role in the economy, which means that there is a lot of inflation and hyperinflation of people gouging. And I think that that is affecting, that's a trickle-down effect to every citizen here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Muntzey.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one and the motion passes.
Okay, that was the motion to close the hearing?
That was the motion to close the hearing.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the resolution to, that after two public hearings, one conducted tonight and one last council meeting, that we have the vote on the tax value will be, on the tax levy will be September 24th. That's a Monday, that's a special called meeting for council. And then we will have the second and final vote on September 25th. Both meetings will be here at City Hall. I believe the one on the 24th will be at 5:00 and the one on the 25th will be at 6:00, your regular scheduled meeting. So I need a resolution to approve that, please.
That's September?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And it passes four to one. Number two, consider ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the FY2019 annual budget.
Yes, sir. This requires a vote of the council as well. Because we are increasing our tax revenues from the prior year, then we have to have council ratify the property tax revenue increase. The adoption of a budget, which we will be looking at later tonight, that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in previous years, requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the tax increase, not a tax rate increase as reflected in the budget as per section 102.007 of the local government code. The tax rate will decrease to 47.6601 cents per $100 valuation for fiscal year 2019. The proposed tax rate is more than the effective rate of 45.079 and lower than the rollback rate of 47.6602. The final vote of the proposed tax rate will occur on September 25th. The annual budget for the fiscal year 2019 year will raise more property tax revenues than last year's by 2,694,133 or 9.62%. Of the additional tax revenue, 733,964 is being generated from new taxable property added to the tax roll this year. So that's property that wasn't there last year. So you can see a big portion of that is due to new property.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Muntzey? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Next move, allow public input on the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone, also known as ATIRS. Ms. Shauner.
We have discussed ATIRS in a couple of meetings beforehand, so some of this information will be redundant for you guys. But we're here to open a dialogue between you and the public regarding ATIRS, the benefits and the needs of the area. So we're going to talk a little bit about the tax increment reinvestment zone. It is, what is it? It's a tiers for short. It's a mechanism for taxing entities to pay for public improvements. It's used by most cities of our size in the state of Texas. In fact, we're one of the few that does not have one at this point, to pay for development and redevelopment of its city. And across the state, it's been very successful in financing redevelopment. So it's a pretty effective tool. There's a couple of steps required by law to create a tiers. The first thing is the government has to decide that it, that it needs one based on funding needs or development needs. Then it selects a boundary for the tiers, a designated area, and then a specific timeline is set for a tiers. It's usually 20 to 25 years. It can be more, it can be less. 20 to 25 is just the standard. From there, the base assessed value of the property within the tiers are determined. Property values theoretically will increase over time, so we want to establish the baseline. And then the increase collected constitutes the increment and the increment then goes into the tiers to pay for public improvements. Municipality passes an ordinance establishing a governing board for the tiers and the zone as a legal entity in itself. And the board's responsibility is to establish a project plan and a budget and then make recommendations to city council to pay for certain improvements that they've talked about, that they've approved. We'll talk about the board in a little bit, but that's one of the elements. So this is a visual of what I just described. We have the tax increment base in blue. That's the value of properties today and the taxes that are collected on that. If you look at the orange, that's what we predict is the increase in property value. So the taxes collected on the increased property value, the orange portion, go into the tiers to fund public improvements. And then what happens at the end of the tiers is everything goes back to the way it was. All taxing entities get the full value of collection of all the property in the area. So after 20 years, it would just revert back to standard collection.
And we're speaking about anyone, any, what is it, tiers? What do you call a tier? We're talking any tier?
That's the function of any tiers.
That's the function of it?
They're all, it's legislated how they're set up and how they function by the state.
Okay.
So any tiers would function the same way.
Awesome. Okay.
So what, how does an area qualify for a tiers? Specifically, as related to our downtown, substantial substandard or deteriorating structures, defective or inadequate sidewalk or street layout, traffic flow, things like that, inadequate layout of accessibility and actual usefulness of the area. Those are the three things related to our downtown. There's a couple of others that can be used such as unsafe and unsanitary conditions or a high percentage of uncollected taxes. There's some special circumstances that don't really apply to us. Those are the most relevant to us right now. Okay, and then what are we going to do with this money? We can pay for professional services to design, plan, We can pay for professional services to design, plan, and legal services to lay out what we want and get our vision going. We can pay for costs associated with the issuance of debt against the tiers. So after your tiers is established, after the first year, you're allowed to issue debt against that money if you so choose. You can reimburse administrative cost, including costs spent, including time spent by city employees implementing the project plan. So the city could reimburse itself for the staff time it uses. Acquisition and construction of public improvements, new buildings, structures, streets, lights, anything you can think of that's a public improvement. Acquisition, demolition, and repair of existing public facilities are eligible. Remediation of public and private conditions that are hazardous, so this is one where it does spill over into the private sector. You can remediate asbestos, or something that is a direct hazard. You can preserve facades, and you can acquire land and equipment as well with this, and pay for the clearing of land, demolition of buildings and things like that. So those are the things that qualify. In a nutshell, it's, it's a little bit broader, a little more in-depth as to what each of those are, but, but that's the nutshell. So we talked about the function of the tiers board of approving the project plan and the budget, and then making a recommendation to council. So that board has to be comprised of a minimum of five members, no more than fifteen. Each taxing entity that chooses to participate gets representation on the board in the form of one member. The governing body that establishes it can have no more than ten, and everybody that chooses to join then gets one, one vote on the board. And they serve two years, two-year terms. So that's their function on the tiers board.
Counsel, you know, with so many things going on in downtown, the, the board that you establish could certainly be used in a variety of different functions if you choose to as well.
There's nothing to preclude them from, from expanding the responsibilities of that board beyond the tiers.
How are the, I'm sorry, how are these board members chosen?
They are, there is specific criteria that the legislation calls for in terms of what sort of requirements are for each member. They have to have a direct connection to property in downtown, but ultimately, the council will have a selection of, it'll be your selection. You get to appoint the board members, as does any participating agency that joins us.
Okay, thank you.
And again, that would be for any tiers zone, so if it was in the north of town, the people appointed to that board would have to have a connection to that northern area. So that's across the board a standard. All right, so our proposed geographic boundary. What you see outlined in red is what we're proposing up there. It's a little bit smaller than our downtown area. Here's the comparison. We mostly cut out residential. There's very little benefit to including that in your tiers. And then we grabbed a little piece on the east that the hospital owns. We think that's the most efficient boundary for our tiers. It certainly can be expanded at a later date if we see a benefit or sufficient growth outside that, or we can establish another tiers just to the north, just to the south, or something like that. If we see that benefit coming, we have those options. It's open to us, but this is where we think is the best place to start. So currently, I mentioned earlier that we established that base collection rate, and that's approximately a hundred and twenty million dollars. That's the value of that designated area downtown today, actually a week ago, but. So annually, the city gets about six hundred thousand, the county gets about four hundred, college two fifty, the hospital is about a hundred and forty. That collection amount listed up there will continue on for the life of the tiers. So those entities will continue to collect that amount for the next twenty years. So anything that increases any property values that go up, the tax collected on that is then what goes into the tiers. Is everybody with me? Okay. So then we did some preliminary revenue projections. I think y'all have all met Mr. James, who was here a couple of weeks ago. This is his predictions. He's a professional, and he did this. Basically, we could collect anywhere from nine million to twenty-three million, based on the level of participation of each entity that they choose to come into the tiers act. The city alone in at a hundred percent gets nine point four million over twenty years. All entities, Ector County, Odessa College, and the hospital, in at a hundred percent gets us twenty-three million to spend on improvements in the designated area over the course of the twenty years. I think it's important to note that the school district is not eligible to participate. That's why they have not, they're not at the table. Speaking of other tax, taxing entities, we've had preliminary discussions with the other three entities. They've all turned out very positive, and we're hopeful for their participation. We have not done formal presentations to their respective boards, but we hope to do that by the end of the year, because it's very important for this particular tiers that we capture the two thousand eighteen value. So we hope to have that done in all of the other entities on board at whatever level they choose by December thirty-first. Going forward, today, we're opening a general discussion. We want to open the dialogue. We're going to have our formal hearing that's been published on September twenty-fifth. That's one of the state requirements of the tiers. And then after that hearing is closed, we're going to present with you the option to adopt the ordinance to actually create the tiers, and that'll put all the other pieces in motion to set up the board and the things like that that go with it. And so I'll have questions or comments.
Any questions, Ms. Shauner?
When does the board have to be in place?
As soon as we create, as soon as you've adopted the legislation that creates the ordinance, we'll have to wait thirty days for the ordinance to be enacted, then we begin, we can begin to appoint members to the board.
Thank you.
What about, who's going to sell this to the other entities?
Well, Mr. Moreo and I have already been doing that. We've already met with all of the heads of each, and like I said, we've had positive discussions with that. Our consultant has met with some of them as well, so we are to answer your question.
The next step, Mr. Gonzalez, will be to formally go before their boards and, or commissions to ask them to consider adopting the tiers as well.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, any more questions? We do have one citizen who would like to speak, Mr. Stoker. If you would, please come forward.
All right. First time up here. So Craig Stoker, four oh eight West Seventeenth. And I had been, not really involved, but when it was presented a while ago about this, I thought it was a very good idea, and I still do. I think anything that can promote investment in our downtown area and promote even more public-private partnerships, I, I think that's a good thing. So I just wanted to speak in support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stoker. If there's anyone else that would like to come forward, we welcome. Are you coming forward?
Actually, I'd like to ask a question, because I remember, I recall, actually, I did something or mentioned something like this a couple of years ago, when I first got in about a private-public partnership, and I think it is, we adamly said, no, that won't work, and we're not doing that here. All of a sudden, we changed our mind.
I don't recall that, Mr. Hamilton, but the one perfect example of a public-private partnership that we started about two and a half years ago is the Hotel and Conference Center.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, why I was told something different versus...
Yes, sir, I don't, I don't recall that conversation with you.
All right. Okay, we will go ahead and move into ordinances. Thank you, Ms. Shauner.
Thank you, Ms. Shauner.
Consider appointment of the judges for the city general and special election. Ms. Grimaldo.
Mayor and council, this item, the Texas Election Code requires that the governing body provide for the appointment of the election judges to be used for the upcoming municipal election for the November sixth, two thousand and eighteen. It also sets the rights of the judges.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Grimaldo? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, consider amending Article twelve dash two of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances. Mr. Feldman.
Good evening, mayor and council. This first item is dealing with our existing ordinance, dealing with traffic, dealing with the use of continuous two-way turn lanes. Basically, what this is changing the ordinance is giving a distance that you can travel in that left turn lane before making the left turn, and not just using it as an additional through lane. So adding to the ordinance is a limit of two hundred feet that you can travel in that lane before making your turn.
Is there a given number that you have to follow?
No, sir.
Will we make it twenty?
Well, we, we considered a range of values based on the range of streets in town.
Forty-second.
Eighth Street, Forty-second Street, so we, we came up at two hundred.
At least we got, we are designing something that we can at least divide by.
Yes, sir.
Which is good.
Other questions?
So you're saying we can't use it as a runway, right?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. So how, how are you going to determine two hundred feet?
Yeah. How does a citizen driving determine that?
I, I think roughly if you get in to that center turn lane to make a left turn between an alley and an intersection, that's usually roughly two hundred foot. If you're, if you're going, if you're traveling in that center turn lane for three blocks, you're going way too far in a center turn lane, so.
Okay, my next question is, I, I always hesitate with ordinances, because unless you enforce it, it's not worth anything. So what does OPD plan to do to enforce this?
I, I think this all started from OPD, and they were looking for a tool to make it more clear, to make it easier on them to, to enforce.
Okay.
So it started from them.
Starting with them.
Yes.
They couldn't do anything, basically.
Right.
They didn't have a number.
Correct.
So are we doing some type of education campaign for the public, or I guess starting out with a little bit of leniency and then moving to a more stringent position?
And I'm, I, I've seen it on Facebook that we have been, OPD has been putting traffic issues online lately, kind of in the education, so I'm sure this will be part of it. So, yes, sir.
Could that be placed on our cable station, our...
I'm sure Andrea could do that.
Could we do that, Andrea?
I'm speaking for Andrea, she was here earlier.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item nine, consider amending Article twelve dash two of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances. Mr. Feldman.
This is another traffic-related ordinance in which, regarding school zones, and the existing ordinance says in the, where the flashing beacons are, that the signs on the flashing beacons and the beacons must be working at the time, and what we're changing, stating the times when the, the flashing beacons or the school zones are in, in effect. So what we're doing is we're changing the wording to say the school zones are effective when the flashing beacons are on, or there's a sign that says the specific times. And I'll give you the example. If you go through the school zones right now on the flashing beacons themselves, the signs say twenty miles an hour, for example, when flashing. We have some long school zones in this town, and I have put, placed some intermediate school zone signs with the specific times on there. So what we're saying is, school zones are effective when the beacons are flashing, when you first enter the school zone, or if you see an intermediate sign with the specific times, it's still effective then, too.
I do have a question. Is there any opportunity that we could actually place daycares in this as well? Because I've had, and I was actually about to email you about this here this week. I had a citizen, actually, she's given me a call a couple of times, it's over on Electric Street, there's a daycare, and quite often, there are a lot of vehicles. What they're doing is they're traveling either north or south on Dixie. You, you with me now?
Okay.
And right before they get to that intersection of Dixie and Murphy, because there's a school zone, and they're trying to avoid that school zone, what they're doing is cutting through the neighborhood. We're talking eighteen-wheelers, heavy, industrial, whatever. And they're coming through that same area, not only where there's a daycare and women and, 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 you know, mothers are dropping off their kids, but there's also a lot of heavy foot traffic from school students walking to the bus stop. So I'm asking you, can we include either some type of flashing zone or possibly some speed bumps around all of our daycares and things like that to include in this? Because those are kids, too.
Um, let me address your first con, or your second comment regarding speed bumps on the streets.
Yes, sir.
City of Odessa, currently, we don't have a speed hump policy. That's why you don't see any speed humps in the city of Odessa. So that could be a further action by the council if that's wished upon. As far as daycares, we can look at that. It's just that my, my first concern about creating school zones for daycares is that there are so many daycares, will we have, will we have so many reduced speed zones that you won't be able to travel on the street? But that's certainly, certainly something we can look at.
Okay.
But I'm just concerned about the number that we could possibly end up with.
Is there, is there any possibility you maybe could do just a quick study? I'm not asking you to dedicate, you know, two or three weeks to it, just check into it and see if it's something that's plausible that we could possibly do.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman.
Any more questions?
Yeah, now that we know that large vehicles are traveling over that way, perhaps we can give up some tickets to just...
Well, it's not just that area. I, I'm just speaking that area.
Right.
But I'm sure it's in, all over Odessa, where I'm just concerned that, I just don't want to see no child, you know, that's, you know, I don't care whose child it is, I don't want to see something happen to a child.
And I think it's time to look into the speed bumps.
If you'll look at that.
You know, we have speed bumps right here at City Hall, and that's the only place in this city.
In the private parking lot, yes.
All right. Anything, any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next into resolutions, consider appointing the mayor to the Permian Basin Regional Planning Commission. Ms. Grimaldo.
Mayor and council, this item is to consider appointing Mayor Turner to the Permian Basin Regional Planning Commission. The commission's bylaws requires a raise, a resolution to appoint the elected official to serve on its board, and this will meet the requirements.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eleven, consider bid award for TAPS contract. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have for your consideration an award of a bid for a TAPS contract with Edgardo Madrid and Associates LLC, and appropriation of two million dollars from the water sewer fund balance for the contract. This is by resolution. As you're aware, we are suffering a shortage of employees and staffing in our distribution and collections area, as well as across the city. But that shortage has caused us to have a deficiency in trying to keep up with the number of TAP requests that we do have from the public. Currently, we have a pending list of a hundred and twenty or so, and so that puts us probably six months out easily on trying to get people TAPS. So what we did do is go out with a request for bids for TAP contract to see what, what we could garner in trying to get some assistance there. We had several companies that were interested in the bid. We received a single proposal, though, and that was from Edgardo Madrid and Associates. We did compare the quotes that we received in that proposal with some similar contracts in the area. Midland has a similar contract, so we did compare those prices with what they experienced, and we found the prices to be within that, within that area, that they were not outside of that boundary. The prices are much higher than we would have expected in the past, or maybe in other regions, but the, the workload in this area generates a higher price on most things we're experiencing right now. And so the, the contractor has to meet payroll, just like we would have to, or whatever, in order to compete with the, with the others. And so what we, we did see was prices that are higher than we might normally would have expected. If I could have done the work employing at salaries that we have, you know, we would hopefully be maybe half of that, but it's, it's not...
How long is the contract?
It's a two-year contract that has options for extension of one year annually for three, three extensions. And so the estimated value of the contract on an annual basis, based on our recent history of TAPS, is a two, is two million, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. That's, this is a work order type contract, so what we do is, as the work comes in, we contract out, so it could be plus or minus that on any year, based on the number of demands for the contract. With, currently, our revenue stream for TAPs would not cover this amount in terms of expenditures. So what we do request is to have two million dollars appropriated from the reserve, the fund balance in water and sewer funds so that we may move forward with the contract so we can try and keep these services going. And then during that time, we will engage a company to come in and do a cost of service study and a rate, a cost of service and rate study for us so that we can, one, assess our cost of service, see where our expenditures really are falling and how we're doing, and then make sure that our revenue process is appropriate and falls within your needs and desires. So that is the request that we have for you today.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Kerr?
Not necessarily a question, but a thank you for coming up with this idea and going forth with it. The citizens of our community, I'm sure, will say thank you for those that need TAPs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Appreciate you, Mr. Kerr.
Mr. Kerr, one question is that those exploration of revenue items are going to take two or three different areas, correct?
I'm sorry?
The exploration of the revenue that's going to be explored by the study.
Yes, they'll be looking at the full cost of our operations and everything.
Great. Good job. You were very swift in that, too.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Item twelve, adopt the City of Odessa FY two thousand and nineteen annual budget. Ms. Muncy.
Mayor and council, this is an item to adopt our fiscal year two thousand and nineteen annual budget. It was filed with the city secretary on August the thirteenth and is required by sections one oh two point oh oh six and one two point oh oh seven of the Local Government Code. A public hearing was held at our last meeting on August the twenty-eighth prior to the adoption that we're asking for tonight. It's a total revenues for all funds of two hundred and twenty-three million dollars, total expenditures of two hundred and sixteen million dollars. These are some increases from last year. Our revenues are being proposed at five point six-six increase and our expenditures at four point four-seven increase. This does include a three percent raise for our employees and some money aside for salary study. And I will entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Muncy?
So the overage goes into fund balance?
Yes, we do project an overage in our new year budget, which will help solidify our fund balance more. We may be looking at some debt issuance in the future, and that would certainly be a benefit to look at our fund balance and see that it's in a healthy situation.
I have a question. Ms. Muncy? Is your name Ms. Muncy?
It is.
Okay, just checking, that's all I have. I love you, Ms. Muncy. I love hearing you talk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All abstained.
The vote is four with one extension, and the motion passes. Miscellaneous, appointment of boards and officers. Ms. Grimaldo.
For the board of survey, reappoint Vicky Gomez for the zoning board of adjustment. Reappoint Rosa Valdez as an alternate. For the planning and zoning commission, reappoint Gary Sims and Steve Fessett.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have no more citizens' comments on non-agenda items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.